Let's begin the regular session of the Des Moines City Council and I will ask Councilmember Carmen Scott to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Although it appears that one council member is absent, and he is in fact not, there he is. So to reflect that all council members are present at this time, Tony, is there any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
At this time, we welcome comments from the public. Please come to the podium here and state your full name and address, and please limit the comments to three minutes. The first individual is Kayleen Moon.
Good evening, I'm Kayleen Moon, 24032, Ninth Place South, Des Moines. And it's my pleasure to come and invite you all to come to a luncheon at the Des Moines Senior Center on April 12th. We want to express our appreciation to the council for their support. And we would like to have you be our guests for lunch so that the seniors have a chance to express to you in person their appreciation for your support in both financially and emotionally. So, thank you, and you're invited.
Thank you very much, Kayleen. So there is such a thing as a free lunch, or is there? Oh, no. Yes. Next speaker is Florence McMullin.
Good evening, Mayor Shackler, council members. I'm Florence McMullin, I live in Huntington Park. And I'm speaking on the ordinance, the draft of the ordinance for the Levy-Lid Lift. I know that I am being a bit redundant, I called all of you individually and thanked you, if I couldn't get you, I left messages for you. But I wanted to thank you all again in public for unanimously and expeditiously moving along the Levy-Lid Lift. And also last Thursday night, I wasn't able to be here. But again, congratulations for being so responsible stepping up to the plate and passing the Redondo Substation. And tonight, again, please, don't drag your feet, suspend your rules, do whatever is necessary. But pass it tonight so that we can move right along. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Only two people signed up, is there anyone else that did not sign up that wishes to address the council at this time? All right, we'll move ahead then to board and committee reports, and we'll start with Carmen.
I haven't had a committee meeting yet, my next one is tomorrow, so I'll pass for right now.
Actually, you did.
Well, but I'm not, I'm not the chairperson of that one.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah, the Public Safety and Transportation Committee has had two meetings now. We've had an opportunity to review a lot of information regarding some side repairs, both on Des Moines Memorial Drive and on the Marine View Drive Bridge, next to the Marine View Drive Bridge. Some short-term temporary repairs are going to be made for which the city will likely be reimbursed in full, though we don't know definitively. And some permanent repairs have been proposed, which would be, if timing-wise works out, will be completed hopefully by the end of summer in terms of the Marine View Drive Bridge. The Des Moines Memorial Drive poses a little bit larger challenge for the city from the standpoint that we're also having to take into consideration long-term planning for the Des Moines Memorial Way improvements that have been proposed throughout the entire Des Moines Memorial Drive quarter. So that's become a little bit of a challenge, and we're having to give that some consideration. And of course, as pointed out by one of the speakers tonight, we have the Levy-Lid Lift ordinance on the ballot for consideration on the public safety side, so. Just one, are we combining personal comments too, or are you breaking those out?
Well, because committees have had an opportunity to meet a couple times now, I was going to let them just report first, but we will definitely give you time shortly for personal comments. And as a matter of fact, I'm thanking for bringing it up, Dave, because if the council so desires, we can combine the two on an ongoing basis, which would be my preference anyways. You get six minutes now. That's correct. Well, you get six minutes either way. Oh, you give six minutes for combined? Combined. All right, anyways, let's go over to Ed. Manuel, six minutes doesn't mean sixty, by the way.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it later?
Well, let me ask Carmen first, did you have any?
Well, I was going to at that point. But when you got around to the council member comments, I was going to make a couple.
All right, Dave, let's progress with this one, and we'll come back for the comments. Ed?
Mine. Well, Dave reported on the council committee that I attend, but last night I attended the SCA Public Affairs Committee. And there were three things that I thought were worthy of bringing up here. One is that they're concerned about landfills. Landfills for King County are running out of capacity. And recycling could extend the Cedar Hills availability to 2015. So you'll see more pressure on recycling. And there's more effort being focused on trying to extend Cedar Hills. If it does, if they can't extend Cedar Hills, then everything has to be shipped out of county, and out of state in some cases. So the prices of waste goes up dramatically. On emergency management funding, funding distribution rules are not clear. The FMA funding requires NIMS compliance requirements. Staff training is required, if your staff is not trained, you don't get funds. And it seems, and there was a discussion, and some people weren't sure, and some people were very sure, that council members have to get such training. Now, apparently, it's a website, which I'll get the information on, and it's a three-hour training session on the website, and I guess you take a quiz at the end. But the punchline is, whatever the compliance requirements are, staff is required, we may be required, and if you aren't, if you don't have the training, you don't get funds on emergency funds. Jails' location, I mean, the current issue is to where to jail people arrested who are mentally ill. Yakima will not take them anymore. And after 2012, King County Regional Jails will not take them. So it becomes a situation, an officer arrests someone who's mentally ill, where does he take them? Well, again, not to Yakima now, to the King County Regional Jail until 2012. And we've got to work collectively on a solution. What do you do after that? And the sooner the better. That's my report.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Susan?
Well, I know you're the chair of the committee, but I just want to say one thing, that we did have a good meeting with Grant and Carmen, myself and Bob before our first meeting. But I do think Grant mentioned that, you know, you guys are working off some of the material that we had in the Economic Development Study. So I'm just thinking it would be helpful for the new council people to have, you know, a copy of that study, I think.
In what study were you referring to, again?
You know, our Economic Development Study that was done last year.
Okay.
By Mr. Bange. I mean, that was my understanding in our committee that, right? Okay, so I just want to bring that up.
Sure.
But, yeah, we're off to a good start, I think, and, you know, I think we're behind the eight ball. We need to keep moving quickly on our economic development so we can see revenues coming into the city. I feel very strongly about that.
Dan?
The Municipal Facilities Committee met last Friday, and we appear to be on a schedule of maybe two meetings a month at this point. Our main project that we're working on is to come up with recommendations for the Marina Master Plan. And it appears that many different opinions are represented on the committee, so this is moving a little slower than I would like. But I guess a lot of the issues will be vetted before they come back to the council. And we have another meeting scheduled for two weeks from now. And we're also going to be taking up the issue of the auditorium and the plans for that, for the reconstruction, or the rehabilitation is really a better word. And so that we can make recommendations to the council. And I did view the meeting that I had missed and saw that that was an important topic, and so we will be taking that up in two weeks, as well as continuing working on the Marina Master Plan.[679.74][679.74[S09] Thank you.
Okay. Scott?
I have no committee reports.
Okay. As pointed out by Carmen and Susan, yes, the Economic Development Committee did meet last Friday. I would like to thank Grant Fredericks for doing what I consider to be an outstanding job in his presentation. What the committee was looking at was a long, long, long list of issues that the committee could be taking up this year. So after review of that, we've asked Grant to come back to our next meeting, which will be held tomorrow, I believe at 2:00. And we will be looking at each one of those issues as to how we prioritize it and what we can take on from, on a month-to-month basis so that we have a schedule or a calendar, if you wish, to present to the city council. Let's go ahead and start with the council member comments at this time. Carmen, you want to start with it?
Oh. I want to make sure that everyone knows how many of us are working cooperatively together and very, very hard to speed things up and make good decisions. When Grant met with us last Friday, one of the things we asked for was advice from him on whether there are any timelines that could be speeded up without doing any harm, that would cause new revenues to happen sooner than projected. I also have been talking to people because we are sending out invitations now, they're at the printers. And I have a mock-up of one here, if anybody cares to see it, it's a large postcard. The governor has confirmed that she will be here on April 14th to commemorate the national listing of the beach park. The Historic Society is going to want their members all to receive one. Covenant Camp, which is now down in Yelm, had decades of campers who all still cherish that park. And they're sending us their list, their mailing list, for people to come. Their person who put their beautiful website together all about Covenant Beach is going to bring a great many photos taken over the decades of how that valley has been used and enjoyed by people. I think it'll be quite an event. I just hope that everyone understands that we want to be working with the community in tandem and cooperatively. And I feel that everybody that has an interest is doing that and is helping us to make strides. I just feel very, very good about all of the people who are stepping forward, volunteering time and thought and good ideas to help us get further than we could all on our own. That's all.
Thank you. Dave?
Five years ago, a couple days ago, we lost one of our police officers. And I remember hearing helicopters at 1:30 in the morning, and I remember getting a phone call from then Assistant City Manager Tony Piaszeki. And I think our city hasn't exactly been the same since. And it's important to remember the work that the people who are serving us in our police department, and all of our city services, but particularly in the police department, are doing on our behalf. And the risks that they take, you know, never knowing which person who they pulled over or they approach poses a risk to them or not. And so I, that event has left a mark on me that won't go away, and something I'm certainly not going to forget. And so I hope that all of you will take time, if you didn't on March 7th, a couple days ago, please take time now to give some thought to the people who are serving us. And just remember that, you know, you hope they come back from their shift, and you hope that they're staying safe and at the same time keeping us safe as well. So I just wanted to leave everybody with that thought.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
I'll pass.
Okay, Susan?
Okay, then I can use up all Ed's time.
No. That's incorrect. But that's a nice turn.
Well, I want to say that, you know, I'm going to Washington DC this Sunday for the National League of Cities Conference. All day Tuesday, I will be meeting with our legislators for Lobby Day on behalf of historic preservation. And I will be taking some of our invitations with me and passing them out to our legislators. And there's a lot of historic people that will want to come. And I might add, this is the first time, I think, that the governor has come to a city to present a historic designation plaque to a city. So, you know, this is, it really is very, very exciting. Happy about that. I think also, you know, I know our city manager was on vacation, he's probably come back slightly overwhelmed, I know. You know, we no longer have the Department of Corrections doing park maintenance for us. And this is something we need to sort out, and I'm sure you're going to talk to.
And I'm actually going to have an update on that when it's my turn.
But, you know, I mean, I saw, what did I see? Oh, Covington. The city of Covington is closing their parks, I mean, there's fences around them, it looks absolutely hideous. I mean, it's terrible. So, you know, I just, I know we're operating on a slightly slim staff, and they're all pretty overwhelmed, I think, with a lot of stuff to do. So I think anything that we can do to expedite, get things moving, Carmen, I really appreciate you saying that, to bring in revenues to our city, I mean, this is, it's just number one on our list, I think. And as I drive through other cities, I see a lot of economic development, positive economic development going on. And we can do this, I believe we can do this. And I think this council can do it too, together. So I'm glad you brought that up, Carmen, because through our committees, if we can get things out of there to the council, it's going to make things a lot easier, I think, for our staff, and then turn them loose and let them do the work. So we're here supporting you, we're all, we're in this together, so just want to keep seeing good things happen.
Thanks, Susan. Dan?
The Des Moines Historical Society, M Museum, with the support of Highline Community College and For Culture, the King County Lodging Tax Consortium, has put together a little map of Des Moines historical sites, see the Waterland Community. It's a map with different historical places from the city. You can use it as a walking map, if you really, you can even use it as a biking map, you go down to Saltwater State Park here. And the properties they list are private properties, and you're not meant to, you know, walk on the properties. But you may want to go and just see them, read something about the history of the city. The Historical Society itself has been organized as a separate organization for 28 years. And do we have copies of this available at the city hall for people to have?
That's the first time I've seen it, but we can contact the Historical Society and get copies.
Right. The Historical Society also has available for anyone interested, a book on 100 Years of the Waterland Community, which is now a decade or a dozen years out of date. And they have a video of historic Des Moines, which is of still pictures for purchase at the museum, as well as a stationary set of hand drawings of buildings and scenes in Des Moines. So just putting that word in, and it certainly follows up with the work that other council members have done in preserving and trying to move forward the historical aspect of our city, both from a cultural point of view and an economic development point of view. Thank you.
I did get a copy of that in my box, it's very well done. Scott? Okay. I'll be very, very quick, because I know the council wants to get out at 9:00 tonight, so I won't spend a whole lot of time. But just a reminder that the Poverty Bay Wine Festival is on this weekend, so if you don't have your tickets, this is sort of publicly watching it on Saturday, hopefully, this meeting. You can still get tickets at the door, come on down, have a lot of fun. Beach Park Auditorium, thank you. And Tony, any admin reports?
I have two quick items regarding the Department of Corrections contract. We, when we first got the letter from them saying that they were going to end our contract 30 days after the date of the letter, I did contact somebody at DOC and ask for a few more weeks worth of time so we could plan to figure out how to deal with it. And we finally found out today that in fact, we are going to get a couple of extra weeks from them. On top of that, we've also been told that they are going to be giving us a contract that will be prospective in nature when it comes to the concern that was brought to the legislature a little earlier that I talked to you about regarding laying off, cutting positions, and then using that money to fund additional work with DOC. So it appears we will have a contract that has that type of a clause in it, but only prospectively and not retrospectively. And we should be able to get back to exactly where we were with DOC, hopefully within the month. So I think we're going to end up being all right.
Yes?
One thing I did mention, and Tony's comments reminded me, at the Suburban Cities Association, there were quite a few cities who were very concerned because a similar thing had been done to them. So the effort was initiated by former Des Moines employees, but it's affecting a large number of cities.
And then the other thing I'd like to do was ask Grant Fredericks to come up, he has an introduction he'd like to make.
Your Honor, members of the council, it's my great pleasure to introduce Dan Brewer, our new city transportation engineer. Dan has joined city staff on March 1st. He's a 1991 grad of the University of Washington, Licensed Professional Engineer. He's worked both in the private sector and most recently for Pierce County Public Works Department. And I can tell you, in his first seven days on the job, he's made quite an impression on me and those other city staff folks that he's worked with. So we're pleased that he's here, I'm relieved, greatly relieved, I've got some great help, and we're looking great things from Dan and his staff.
Dan, you want to take a minute and just kind of introduce yourself?
I don't know what else to say, happy to be here. There's a lot of work going on in the city, and I'm happy to be getting started on it.
All right, Dan. Welcome aboard.
There you are.
We promise you won't be bored. Okay. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk to read the consent calendar.
Item number one, finding vouchers audited. Item number one, finding vouchers audited and certified by the auditing officer as required by RCW 42.24.080. And those expense reimbursement claims certified as required by RCW 42.24.090 have been recorded on a listing which has been made available to the city council. Motion, as of this date, the Des Moines City Council by unanimous vote does approve her payment. Those vouchers and payroll transfers included in the above list are further described as follows. Claim checks number 102907 through number 103306, and electronic fund transfers in the total amount of $315,171.76. Payroll fund transfers in a total amount of $344,417.24. Item number two, motion is to authorize King County to perform emergency roadway bridge repairs to Saltwater State Park Bridge under the existing signed inter-local agreement for road and bridge maintenance services at an estimated, excuse me, amount of $40,000, including a contingency to address any unforeseen repairs that might be required. Ah, I got a tickle. And to direct the city manager to include a transfer, Linda, I'm sorry, I can't finish. Include a transfer of $40,000.
Let's see, where was she? To include a transfer of $40,000 from the ending fund balance to the arterial street fund, ending fund balance of the arterial street fund, there's a reason she's the city clerk. Through the appropriate expenditure line item in the next budget amendment ordinance presented to the city council for approval. Item three, motion is to adopt the 2006 Exhibit A for the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Auburn, Burien, Covington, Des Moines, Federal Way, Kent, Renton, Sea-Tac, and Tuckwillah for the Joint Human Services Funding Program. Item four, motion is to extend through May 31st, 2006, the contract for professional services with Judith Kilgore, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as submitted. That's the end of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there any council member who wishes to remove an item? Scott?
Item four, please.
Any other?
I just want a clarification, is that total for the Joint Human Services Funding Program $13,700? It wasn't specified, I added up what I thought was correct.
Are you talking about the expenditures of the city of Des Moines?
Yes.
I believe you're correct, yes.
Thank you.
It's just those that are listed on here, obviously, there are other human services expenditures we have, but we're doing these altogether.
Yes, I understand.
More efficient.
Okay, I want to make sure I added correctly. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the calendar?
Second.
Motion made in second, in all favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Scott, item number four.
Yeah, this one I had a few questions on. There were four items within the scope of work that were transitioning to the work to a city employ. Is that person now hired? I guess one question is, how come the work hasn't been accomplished yet? And is that because the employee hasn't been here, or what?
The employee is now on board full-time as of just a few days ago. She was working one or two days a week for the last two weeks of February. She had to transition from her old job over to her new job, so she is on board and eagerly reading all of this material and getting herself up to speed as quickly as possible.
So is that the reason for the delay in performing the work?
That is the basic reason for it, yes.
And then the other item, is that dependent upon the port, or is that moving forward?
The Port of Seattle agreement and the work that's being done there, like any large, large project like that, it has gotten a little bit of delay in it, but we are, we are very, we're pretty certain that by the end of May we will have the project in good enough form, that the SEPA work will be done, and the bones of the next development agreement will be very much in place. And at that point, I think we'll be prepared to be able to pick that up as regular staff and keep moving along with it.
So the intent is to transition that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott, do you wish to make any of your motion?
Oh, I'll go ahead and move approval of the consent calendar, or number four item.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
The attachment is a copy of the contract that is in place now.
Correct.
It includes estimates of hours on work that some work must have been done.
Some work was done.
Sure those estimates be changed.
This adds up to approximately $22,000 worth of effort. We've spent about $6,000 of that $22,000 to date, so whatever's left, that's as much as will go. And I don't, I honestly don't think we're going to end up going that much. So we'll stay within the scope of the contract.
Well, I guess my question is, will these hours, are these hours to be interpreted as an upper limit on total hours? as an upper limit on total hours from when this contract?
Out to the end of May, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify that this will allow us to continue to stay on top of the economic development plans with the port, with the port buyout area.
Absolutely.
Which probably is the most important economic development project we've got going right now.
Yes.
Thank you. Carmen?
Under the words "contract extended," it says "to May 31st or until the remaining $15,625 has been spent." Is there a likelihood that it will be spent by May 31st, or is that saying we'll keep going after May 31st if it's not all spent?
If it's not all spent, we're done on May 31st.
Okay.
If we spend it all by the beginning of May, we're done.
Okay.
Susan?
Okay, we can add, we can add the, we can add the words whichever occurs first.
Okay, that was what I wondered about there. Okay, it's kind of my understanding that this, I mean, there is a lot of work to do on this development agreement, but the likely, it's most likely that it's going to really come back to us somewhere early fall, is that right?
I'm not aware of the exact timing, but I think that sounds about right, late summer, early fall.
Okay.
But what this will allow is the, like I said, the bones, the outline of the next development agreement to be very, pretty much in place. And at that point, quite frankly, the lawyers are going to be going back and forth as to which words to be putting in there, and I think Linda will be a little bit more involved in it than she is right now.
Okay, so you're comfortable, you know, seeing this through May and then have it transition, and whoever's going to be picking this up will be able to see this through?
Yes.
You are, okay.
If Linda got a vote.
What?
I didn't get it either. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and I will, for the record, abstain. Okay, the next item, well, let's do this. I was pondering whether or not I should let the Des Moines Leadership Summit report to the community, go last, because there's only a few people here, right? How many people are here for the Leadership Summit? Oh, all right. We'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to do the levy lift, let's make sure we get it done.
Oh, go next.
Well, I'd like to get the Normie Park thing behind us.
Yeah, we have a lot of.
So we can, we can change the order, we don't like what the mayor's done.
Daniel. Daniel.
We've done it before.
Daniel, you're wasting, you're wasting time. Okay.
Do I have support? We can.
Dan.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kaufmell. I'm the president of the Des Moines Rotary Club and the chairperson of the Rebel Writing Committee for the Leadership Summit.
Good evening, Mayor Scheckler and council members. I'm Eileen Byers. And I hold.
See, if I get any shorter or this gets any longer, we're going to have to have a talk about this. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Did you buy this new?
With you in mind.
Platform shoes, Eileen.
Well, you know, we, the elder folks don't like to get too high off the ground. It's a long way down. It's really nice to be here, and tonight, we're going to make our presentation in tandem. I have been, have the privilege of presenting the first and close, and my friend here will be taking the meat of the subject and describing it to you. Also, they have put together, she, I think that her husband, anyhow, with considerable health, put together a wonderful video here that we're going to run in the process, so please enjoy that too, because it is nice. First, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity tonight to address you, representing the Des Moines Leadership Committees. We're here to tell you how communication and actions can inspire and affect the quality of life in this city. And the local, and the players are all local volunteers. And it all started April 28th in 2005. Jane Epson, who was then the president of the Des Moines Chamber of Commerce, Diane Jacobson, president of the Business Boosters, and Mayor Scheckler and 25 seconds met to try to determine how they could improve and coordinate efforts for the business climate within the city. They soon realized that the far-reaching possibilities of working them together, the power that it would have to make changes within this community. And with that thought, they agreed, and Mayor Scheckler suggested that a summit be put together. And that is what happened. So on August 13th, the first summit was held, and to show the interest, that was a hot summer day, and everyone was there and stayed until the end. The participants were asked at first, two questions, and one is, what is my organization doing now to make Des Moines a better place to live? And the second is, what would I like to see happen in the future? It was question two that sparked a burst of high enthusiasm, and from that, an identification of nine future priorities came forward, and they are: improve citywide aesthetics, make Des Moines a destination place, hold more community events, encourage partnerships, encourage businesses, streamline the permitting process. Is our new gentleman here? No. More youth and senior programs, enhance public safety, and last, better citywide communication and information sharing. From that, eight committees were formed to explore the priorities and to set specific recommendations. For three months, September, October, and November, we gathered and we were meeting weekly. These groups were faithful and dedicated to going through on this. On December, they reconvened, December 3rd, and they reported back, every chairman reported back on their committee. A vote was taken, using red dots. I think we have, anyway, using red dots, and she will show you here some of them, and you can see there were many, many things that, that's only a sampling. And those red dots were put next to the topic that people wanted to show as being a high priority in their opinion. And in the order of high priority, this is the way it came out. Number one was permits, number two was safety, number three, destination, four, communication, five was safety, six was safety, seven, beautification, eight was events, number nine was safety, number 10 and number 11 were beautification, number 12 was safety, and number 13 was seniors and youth, 14 events, and number 15 was safety. I think it's interesting to note that out of 15 priorities, there were six that indicate safety. Obviously, they want to feel safe within their community, that's a high priority, and three is beautification. So these leaders continued to meet and creating programs and identifying supporting resources. They are not only meeting and discussing, they are actually creating things and implementing them and putting them to progress and making things happen right now from these very priorities and recommendations that this committee has organized. These committees recognize and applaud the council and the staff for the outstanding assistance that made this possible. They were right there with us throughout the time to just be there to help, not to direct, not to tell us what to do, but to be there to provide whatever support and information they could to help us meet those things. And so from those combined efforts, a bright star in the picture of the future of this city's already magnificent natural beauty was discovered. And that, council members, is what we present to you tonight. Lisa will take it from here.
Mayor Scheckler and fellow council members, the Leadership Summit really created a whirlwind. Members met individually as smaller subcommittees, as clubs, as organizations, and as empowered members of the community. And the meetings produced a plethora of information that needed to be disseminated and inscribed. So the next step, a report writing committee. Let it not be said that we don't enjoy our committees. The chairperson for each subcommittee got together and put down on paper all this information, all the voting that we did, and are now trying to present it to you as our report. As Eileen had gone through all the voting in order by number of votes, the way we're going to present it to you is actually by committee, so instead of just each individual item. The first committee is permitting. This committee quickly surmised that in order to accomplish many of the things that the Leadership Summit is asking to do, that permitting was an important piece of the puzzle. Permitting has to be easier, more streamlined, and more efficient. Some of the solutions that the permitting, permitting committee came up with, and this also included other members of the community that were knowledgeable in the subject, were timeliness, improving and providing more predictable times to permit projects, simplification, reducing the complexity of permitting and simplifying the Des Moines Municipal Code to make it easier to understand and use, internet access, making projects, making project information and city permitting services available in a user-friendly way on the city website, teamwork, improving the way and efficiency with which different city divisions work together. The next committee, the Public Safety Committee, this one was obviously had the most number of votes total. So it's obviously an issue that is the cornerstone of attracting new businesses, residents, and tourists to our community. A focus on a safer community, a community free of crime and the fear of crime is essential. The Public Safety Committee found that it was important to restore police staffing to their 1990 level, 99 level, either by reprioritizing funding or through a successful levy lift election, which I understand you will be discussing later. They also discussed the Redondo Police Substation, which I understand you already took care of, so good job, you guys are quick. There are also many votes sampling other police programs, including but not limited to technic, technology enhancement, emergency management plans, and other police department programs that involve the community. The next committee, Destination Des Moines, this committee focused on the physical connection between I-5, Highway 99, Highway 516, downtown Des Moines and the marina, and they felt that there was not a physical connection from, between those areas, and wanted to try to incorporate some way to bring people down from the major thoroughfares into the city of Des Moines and into the marina. Their suggestions included signage, incorporating the boats from the signs down in through the city, painted feet, walking tours, maps, and more. Another idea included making restaurant placemats that would feature businesses in Des Moines and also include a walking tour. And then they strongly stood behind the implementing of the marina master plan. Citywide communication, this team studied the ways that the community members currently receive their information. Being a smaller city, we are largely ignored by the larger media of the Seattle Times and the Post Intelligencer. So the accurate picture of the city falls to the local media. Although they are owned by the same company, the papers are divided by the city school districts, and so federal, parts of the city of Des Moines is receiving Federal Way newspapers. Their attractive alternative is an internet. The committee recommends a webpage to allow better communication among city organizations and governments that serve the Des Moines community. Aesthetics and beautification, the aesthetics and beautification committee concentrated on the overall look of the city. They recommended the formation of a commission or a cooperative committee of residents, citizens, and business owners who are interested in partnering to hand out flower baskets, install benches, clean and repair landscapes, and improving the general aesthetics. They also recommended implementing new maintenance codes with minimum requirements for owning, operating, and maintaining current residences, businesses, and storefronts, including general care, handmade signs, cleanup, and maintenance of parking lots and landscape. They also strongly recommend the formation of an arts commission to allow further beautification of Des Moines through the placement of art throughout the community. More community events, this committee focused on streamlining the process of advertising, approving, and communicating to each other and the community events going on in Des Moines, as well as providing solutions that will encourage more events and that the community will enjoy. One concern addressed was the loss of Waterland, one of the main tourist drawing events of the year. They discussed possible solutions and ways to incorporate advertising and promotion of summer events to allow for more attraction and excitement. In fact, a new event calendar has been designed and will be displayed throughout the city next week. Also, a frontmers market will take place in the Des Moines starting this June. The overall conclusion of the Events Commission was, or Committee, was the need for an Events Commission to help accomplish the mentioned recommendations. The Events Committee went a step further by discussing and researching the possibilities of a Des Moines Commission, much like what Burien and Kirkland have in place. This would incorporate an Events Commission, an Arts Commission, Image Commission, Real Estate Building Commission, under one umbrella nonprofit organization that partners hand-in-hand with the city. And finally, programs for youths and seniors. Another focus from the summit was a concern for at-risk youth and programs for seniors to enjoy. An interesting solution rose up from their discussions, the implementation of cross-generational interaction of youth and seniors, allowing seniors to pass on their knowledge and hobbies in such ways as knitting, gaming, crafting, sewing, banking, and more, and in turn, learn from today's youth computer skills and other new hobbies and interests. The Leadership Summit and its subcommittees have already done a lot of research on these subjects and are well aware of the challenges and benefits that will be addressed in the implementing of them. But no one group can accomplish all this alone. We are not here today to lay a laundry list in front of the city council and simply look at our watches to see how long it takes for you to implement them all. We are here to reach out a hand in partnership as empowered and grateful citizens that want to be a part of the exciting growth of this community. The members of the Leadership Summit have some conclusions and requests of the city, the organizations of the city, the businesses and the residents of the city, and in turn will offer our own commitments to the city and its citizens. They are: the city of Des Moines, the Leadership Summit asks the city of Des Moines through the city council to adopt this report to the community as starting place for creation of a community-wide vision for Des Moines. As the city council conducts its annual update of its visions and mission statements and strategic objectives, the summit asks the council to include these recommendations as priorities for the city. One, make streamlining improving the permitting process and enhancement of public safety the city's top priorities, to include support of the current efforts with the permitting process and a levy lift proposal to the voters in 2006. Two, work to make Des Moines a destination by improving the physical connections between the marina, the waterfront, downtown, and the major transportation corridors serving the city, I-5 and Highway 99. Three, provide support in the establishment of a citywide webpage. Four, support the establishment of, A, an aesthetics and beautification committee, B, an arts commission, C, an events commission, D, a nonprofit organization that encourages and promotes all the citizens' goals in the way of events, arts, beautification, building, and destination status. Five, continue creating and supporting programs for at-risk youths and seniors, particularly programs that encourage cross-generational, cross-generational interactions. Six, implement a new property maintenance code. Of the business community, the Leadership Summit asks the business community to play a leading role in the implementation of these recommendations through its representation of businesses in Des Moines and its efforts to improve our business clientele, climate. One, support the efforts to create new events in town to help the entire business community understand the business, the benefits of increasing the number of visitors to Des Moines. Two, I know it doesn't, I skipped it by accident, sorry, be a major force behind, if not the creator and maintainer of a citywide webpage. Three, provide input and keep the business community informed and engaged in the following efforts, streamlining the city's permitting process, creation of a new property maintenance code, and creation of an Events Commission, Arts Commission, and a Beautification Committee. Four, work to enhance public safety in Des Moines by supporting a property tax levy lift. Of the service clubs, community groups, churches, and homeowners associations, the Leadership Summit asks all service clubs, all community groups, churches, and homeowners associations to carefully review and consider associations to carefully review and consider these recommendations and take part in those that fit with your mission or provide you an opportunity to be a greater participant in your community. One, create new events or be part of the efforts to create new events. Two, have representation, representatives serve on an arts commission, beautification committee, events commission, or city webpage nonprofit. Three, work to keep the city clean by adopting a street, park, or some spot in Des Moines that is in need of attention. Four, volunteer to work with youth and seniors in our community through programs at the Des Moines Activity Center, our schools, and our retirement homes. The Des Moines Leadership Summit. The participants of the leadership summit believe that this is, that it is their responsibility to continue the process of making Des Moines a truly great place. They must see that all the recommendations they made are presented to those members of the community who have the ability to implement them. In addition, the participants must also agree to take part in the implementation process when it is within their or their organization's ability to do so. One, the leadership summit will present this report to the community, starting with the Des Moines City Council, to as many groups and as individuals as possible, asking them to implement or take part in as many of these recommendations as possible. A list of speakers and a presentation will be created, and a proactive outreach program will be conducted to set up times when this report can be presented. Two, the leadership summit will continue to meet on a regular basis to develop implementation plans for as many of their recommendations as possible, monitor and assist with the implementation efforts of others, discuss and modify its recommendations as needed, and discuss and develop recommendations on new issues that arise. I want to thank you again for this incredible experience, and I will turn it back to Arlene, who will conclude this report with a, if I can get out of this, that will go along with a very nice visual effect, if we can have the DVD back.
Yeah.
Leave you with some wonderful memories here.
We're not looking for work as DJs, are we? As you see this, you're going to see, start out with the people at the first summit, the second one, and you see the interconnection here of the community coming together, painting a picture of what they see, a vision to be for our city. And it's absolutely amazing as I look back over the years and think of the time we hired, I think, a rather well-paid consultant, and the people in droves that turned out of our citizens to do exactly this. Nothing came from that. And he kind of, we, he and I kind of had a parting of the ways when I heard him suggest that the marina should not be allowed to have recreational walkers, and when he got down to including ladies and their dogs, that did it. So I think it's marvelous to know that this whole program has been put together by volunteers who have an investment in this community, both financially and emotionally. They're stepping up to the board, to the table here, and they're putting forth their best effort, and I think it's one of the most promising things that has happened in this community in my over forty years of watching it grow. So Lisa and I are here to tell you that unlike us, some of the wonderful ideas of the past, we're not here to pass this project off to the council for you to put on your to-do list, or to end up with it in a file drawer for lack of resources to move it forward. We indeed have the privilege of representing tonight enthusiastic, committed, community leaders and organizations that have joined hands and are already producing results. We continue to meet regularly to make Des Moines an even better place to live. And so in closing, our question to you is an invitation. Will you join hands with us to make this vision a reality? Thank you, Mayor Scheckler and council members, for this opportunity to share these inspiring achievements.
Thank you. Counsel, this would be an opportunity to ask any questions you may have of those representatives that are here today, and hopefully that we'll agree to encourage them to move forward and adopt this. Yes, Susan?
Yeah, who did the DVD? I'm just curious. Did you, Lacy, or did I stop? Well, I think it's, I think it's great the community has all come together and worked on this, you know, it's, we're all doing this collaboratively. It's just like, there's so many things you mentioned in there that the economic development study mentioned. I mean, we're all on the same page, it's just moving it forward. You know, I think we all are on the same page. We all want the same things. There are a few nice things we can check off the list, the substation, the levy-lid-lift, you know, I mean, so you see, we are, there's a few things we can, you know, but, you know, we all do want the same thing. So I think it's great to move it forward, it's keeping the volunteers, like anything, you know? How long do volunteers really commit to keep things moving? It starts off great, we know this from experience. You know, you form groups and everybody says, well, we're going to do this, but volunteers unfortunately burn out if they don't see more volunteers signing up to go along with them. So, you know, it's a great thing. I mean, the more community support, the better. So, you know, I commend you and support this, and, you know, it's a good thing. So, good job.
Ed.
There's this thing you people have recommended that I don't agree with, so I'm going to do everything I can to make it happen. One of the important things, first item on the agenda, for you and for me, has been public safety, and the levy-lid-lift is a cornerstone of making that happen in this community. So let's make it, let's make it happen with telephone calls, with recruiting other people and so forth, because if that doesn't pass, many of the things we want to do are going to be very hard to do and still provide public safety.
You looking at me, Dave? Would you like to say something?
I, I attended the meeting in December where the various committees brought back the results of the work they had, and it's extremely impressive. And as I mentioned to Scott at a prior meeting when, you know, concern was expressed about where the committee came from and what it did and all that, the thing that, that's outlined here, what's amazing to me, is that there are clear things that the council is going to need to do in terms of the permitting process and some other things, where we're going to have to make the changes in order to make these things that, that the people in the community have essentially told us are things that need to be addressed and things that we knew needed to be addressed, happen. But there's a lot of other things that are literally going to be carried forward on the spirit and the effort of the volunteers in the community that are going to enhance the community and supplement, obviously, the things that we do. And, you know, there's a saying that success breeds success, and the successes and the accomplishments that they have, and the successes and the accomplishment that we helped to initiate and bring about, will feed off itself, and that's the kind of spirit and energy that we need if we're going to make the permanent changes we need to in town so that we're going to be on a sound financial footing, so that we're going to be seen as a destination to come to, so that we're going to have a sound basis for maintaining police services. All of the things that we want to see happen need to build upon each other. And I think this is a great start, and I think the committee did a great job of outlining those things that need to be done. So I, I'd like to commend them for the work they've done.
Dan?
Yeah. You know, thank you very much for giving your time and suggestions and spending time to, obviously, you're going to be spinning things off on your own and doing a number of activities independently, which basically, the faces I see here today and the names I see in the list here of people who attended, you're all community activists. This isn't new for you. You've all been active in the community, given your time, given your energy, and I hope you will continue to do so. I believe that you were chosen to participate in this because you were all community activists. I'm hoping that some of this will also be able to filter on down to more people in the community, maybe as Dave has said, you know, if they see people being active, coming up with ideas, giving their energy and time, maybe others will also be willing to do the same, because that does make for a better community. So thank you very much for your work.
Carmen.
Since there are so many involved good people out here, if each of you felt you could take whatever time you have available to focus on getting the word out about the levy-lid-lift, that is the one thing that is going to make or break getting very far very soon with all of the other things we want to do. So although you're on a variety of different committees, if each committee could give whatever time they could to networking and, and getting the word out how vital this is, that it is truly essential financially. The, the, the community needs to be a part of helping us have essential funds to tide us over while we find the ways to increase our revenues. And, and they need to understand that it's, it's not a matter of saving a few pennies on taxes, it's, it's supporting the community that's a part of their lives, and it's really essential. So I thank you very much for all you've done, and I hope you'll put whatever effort you can into helping this part of it move ahead.
Thank you, Carmen. Scotty?
Yeah, I do also want to thank you for your efforts, and I know it's hard to spend nice Saturdays in a room locked up doing city business, but, so I appreciate that. I am a little, I have some questions, I don't know that any of you'd be able to respond or not, but one, one aspect of this is what the, well, I'll say the businesses can do. I lost the page that I was on, the business community. And, you know, we had a chamber, there were issues, boosters formed, the chamber dissolved. It seems there's a need for a Chamber of Commerce, whether it's a Des Moines-only, a greater South King County, but at least has a Des Moines emphasis or something. So I guess I am curious what conversations are going on amongst business leaders in terms of whether there should or shouldn't be an organization, what it looks like, and I know historically even, you know, the highway had its own little committee for a while, you know, so, so even the chamber didn't really include all of the, the neighborhoods of, of business of Des Moines. So is there anyone who can speak to that?
Jane Ipsen happens to be in the audience. And Jane, would you come forward and?
I happen to be here. Sure. The businesses in town have come together fantastically, for lack of a better word, in joining the Southwest King County Chamber of Commerce. And within that chamber, we have a Des Moines Business Committee that meets every month. And every time we get together, more and more of us are attending that meeting, and we are learning all kinds of things that are going around in the community that helps the businesses make decisions about how they're developing their businesses, how they're growing their businesses, and what opportunities are out there. I know that many of the folks that have attended the lunches, that have attended the networking breakfast, have found them to be most helpful, and some have even gotten business out of that already and increased their business just by participating. So while we do not have the Des Moines Chamber of Commerce anymore, we have something bigger and better that I think will offer our, our businesses an awful lot. And I think that you will see there's a great deal of solidarity among the businesses in town to make Des Moines a destination.
So with respect to some of the recommendations about webpages and stuff, where I might have thought that that would either be a chamber thing or the Visitors Bureau thing that we're contracted with, is there any talk of that sort of thing happening there?
We have not discussed that in detail with this group as it stands today. That certainly was discussed with the Des Moines Chamber. We were simply not in a position to move that forward, but that is something that I think we can talk about in our Des Moines Business Committee meetings and see what we can do as a group to, to maybe do something more to promote all of us.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Fair enough, thank you. I know it talked about events and, and an event commission, which some of the names, I don't quite know what they picture, but by all means, have all the events you want. The only problem is when they're at city facilities, we do have to get involved.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, that's for sure. Okay, those are my questions. Okay. Well, I'll wrap it up and say that, you know, in some respects, I'm just speechless, and for me to make a comment like that, well...
Can we hold you to that, Mike?
March 9th, 2006, at 8:40 PM.
Yeah, please make a note. It's just amazing, back in April, when the first discussion between myself and Tony was there, and of course Jane was there, and Mrs. Corky, Hello Diane, was there, I had no idea that it would blossom into something like this. When I left that meeting and was challenged with the task of trying to put this together, I thought to myself, well, are there really enough people out there to really make it happen? Are there enough interested parties in this community? Because you hear, ah, people don't care, they don't, they won't rally to this kind of stuff. It was absolutely amazing in August to see, and as someone so accurately pointed out earlier, on a beautiful August day, to see fifty-plus people out there and stay the entire time and broke into these different committees that, and then I asked myself the question afterward, I said, oh, let's see if they're really going to do this, these committees are going to go out there. Well, they did, and it was incredible because I kept getting all these invitations to attend all these meetings, and my goodness, I was bouncing around like a ping-pong ball. Amazing what was going on. And then when they met again in December, there they all were again, and some new faces. I know Dan said earlier, well, you know, there are a lot of community activists here, and we see them a lot, and they say a lot, but there's a lot of faces and names there that I was not familiar with. And when you get that many people, it's more than just community activists, it's a community. And then, amazingly, before this was even brought to the city council for his blessing, adoption, or whatever we're doing, we get a farmer's market. And all of a sudden, there is all of this effort on the part of the community to rally around public safety and supporting of the Redondo Substation and the levy-lid-lift. Activities, a calendar, I just saw it the other day, that's coming out here very shortly, that's amazing, the activities they're talking about, and this is just the beginning. This is just absolutely the beginning of the activities they're talking about. Events and art commissions? Hello? Wow! That's amazing. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, I could spend the rest of the... I mean, I could spend the rest of the evening doing that, but I said I was speechless, so I got to be careful. Yeah, I know, really. I just cannot thank the community enough for what they've done, and thank you for what you're telling us all that you're going to be doing in the future. I'm looking forward to the next meeting. I discussed it with the city manager, and we're going to try to put one down again as early as April. Get out there, make sure everything is lined up and ready to go, and of course, we'll structure it pretty much the way we did before, to make sure that the city is available for you, to assist you in your efforts. But thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done. It's making our jobs so much easier. So, with that, I'll stop. And is there any other comments from the council? All right, Ed, you want to get the last word in, do you?
Naturally.
That's my job.
The, what we've heard is overwhelming, but one of the things that was on that list is something that we have to do, okay?
That's right.
We talked about safety, we need help in getting levy lid lifts. We talked, the second item on the list was permitting. I think it's time that this council asks our city manager to come up with some ideas and plans for how to improve permitting, float time, and costs.
All right.
If like, just Carmen, that's being worked on?
That's, yes, that's already in committee. Okay. All right. Was there someone else that made it? Carmen, you're looking at me like...
I just want you to speak up, because we're already doing it.
Okay, that's already in committee. So, I'm going to get the last word, Ed, whether you like it or not. And it's this. I also want to thank the city staff for the tremendous amount of work they put in there. You all know who you are. And I would like to, at this time, although it's not on the agenda item itself, I would like to make a motion that the city council adopt these recommendations.
I'll sign it.
All right, any discussion on that? Scott? Dan?
Yeah. Adopt recommendations is a very strange concept. We can certainly receive the report, but adopting the recommendations emboldens them as policy, and it's things we haven't discussed yet as a council. And where Ed said he liked every one of these, there's some things here, like an arts commission, when we don't have money to...
Well, there is a good point there, because there's a few things that aren't for us yet.
Right. So, I, I do think it's fair that as we do our vision in the mission statement and strategic plans, that we certainly have this on the table as we're talking about what to do next, but to just adopt it, I'm not comfortable with that.
What I can do is, go ahead, Carmen.
Well, as reference material, as something to look to, we're not adopting it as something official within our...
That's what's...
The term "adopt" can be interpreted, and I know where he's coming from.
How about "accept, receive"? We did that with the economic plan.
Yeah, we could probably do that.
Endorse?
Did I see?
Accept, receive.
Did I see your hand?
I wouldn't, endorse.
I was going to recommend we change the motion.
That's fine, I'm okay with that, because "adopt" is a term that can be, you know, interpreted in different ways.
To accept and receive for appropriate actions.
Okay.
Yes.
If the term "accept," what I want to make sure is that they have a green light to continue on and move forward.
Accept, receive of it.
Okay. And that's okay with me, so I'll move that we moved. Jane?
Yeah, they don't need a green light from us to continue doing what they're doing.
They would like support from the city council in some way, shape, or form that says we are accepting it or that we're encouraging it. So, if the term "accept"... Accept, receive of. All right. Well, anybody else want to make a comment on that?
I was going to say, I think what Dan recommended in terms of accepting, receiving of the report is a good approach for now. I think there's going to be plenty of opportunity to adopt specific recommendations as we work our way through it later, so...
Then I'll move to you and use the word "accept, receive of."
I'll second.
One second, okay. Any further discussion? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
The leadership summit members are over here discussing, and we'd like, we'd like to choose, or help choose the word, we like the word "endorse" better.
Endorse.
Yeah. And I think "endorse" sounds too much like "adopt." Okay. Okay, I'll tell you. For the moment, I think I can interpret, I know exactly where they're coming from. "Accept" is okay with me. Is there any other discussion? Because a lot of things will be coming forward later on that we will be actually adopting. So, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, fine. And I'll explain to you later what the terminology difference is. Okay, council, why don't we do this? Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break and let anybody in the audience that wishes to leave, leave now, and when we come back, we'll go into the levy lid lift.
Well, I think if they want to have relations with us, they need to stay.
The next item on our agenda is draft ordinance number 06-058, the levy lid lift on the first reading. And Tony, what staff member is going to be making this presentation?
I'm asking both the finance director and the police chief to say a few words about the ordinance that is in front of you.
Well, it'll be really brief. This ordinance is similar to the one that was presented last year, except that we have excluded the Redondo substation and the total of the expenditures. The information has been updated, so the ordinance is as worded council had put in the, or basically added their comments, and that's included in this ordinance at this time. So...
And I'll ask the chief to talk a little bit about the items that are in the ordinance, or actually, not so much in the ordinance, but in the proposal for restoring some of the positions that have been lost over the last six years.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this agenda item is to present to council for consideration and approval draft ordinance, providing for the submission to qualified voters of the city at the May 16th election, a ballot measure that will increase the city's property tax rate to provide funds to restore police department staffing to previous year's level, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Also, there is another change to this ordinance in that we have compressed the amount of time, we've compressed the time, to get the staff members onboard and to get the teams back in operation. But since 1999, the Des Moines Police Department has cut seven patrol officer positions, four community service officer positions, a record specialist, and a halftime animal control officer. All of these positions were cut from the police department budget due to budget shortfalls within the City of Des Moines General Fund. The cumulative staff cuts have reduced the police department personnel by 20% and have severely impacted the police department's ability to provide basic and proactive police services to our community. The police department no longer has adequate staffing to provide proactive or directed policing activity to the increasing crime problem in our community. Little bit about crime rates, which we've talked about before, from the year 2000 to 2005, Part 1 crimes have been steadily increasing since we've reduced staffing. In 2003, the increase for Part 1 crimes was 10%. In 2004, the increase was a staggering 22.6%, and Part 1 crimes increased about 10% in 2005. These percentage increases mean more members of our community are victims of crimes. Since 2000, there has been a steady increase also in 911 calls for service from the Des Moines community. In 2000, there were slightly more than 19,000 calls for service. In 2004, there were over 23,000 calls, and calls for service increased last year in 2005 by 1%. Patrol teams do their best to fill in for functions which were lost over the years. The staff redeployment cannot accomplish all of the duties of the positions that were lost. Patrol teams are still responding to basic patrol function responsibilities such as in-progress 911 calls, while trying also to fulfill some of the duties assigned to staff that are no longer employed by the department. Staff cuts limit our ability to keep safe and adequate patrol team staffing levels, as well as necessary staffing levels in the detective division. Overtime shifts and staff reassignments are required just to keep the patrol team staffed at minimum levels. A position in the detective unit normally assigned to investigate property crimes such as burglary, thefts, and auto thefts remains vacant because of staffing reductions. This position was reassigned to the patrol unit to maintain, again, minimum staffing requirements to simply respond to the increased calls for service. Significant or high-priority property crime investigations are now spread out to the other detectives for work assignments such as crimes against person and child abuse crimes. The proposed levy lid lift will restore some of the police department positions which have been eliminated over the past five years. We're proposing the restoration of six officer positions, three community service officers, and one record specialist. Those positions will allow us, again, to be proactive in our gang activity investigations, license prostitution activity investigations, drug investigations, burglary, auto theft, and also, at the same time, be able to back up or help patrol in their directed patrol activities. This will allow us to deal with violent and chronic offenders, to target violent and chronic offenders in our community, to do location-specific criminal investigations, to be actually able to place officers in the area and leave them there to monitor for criminal activity. Wanted person apprehensions, those people that are already have warrants out for them, will be able to monitor, to trace them, and apprehend them. And also, it will help us with critical incident and emergency management staffing. So, this is the proposal that we have for the levy lid lift. If there are questions that I can answer about the implementation of these programs and these personnel, I'd be happy to entertain those questions.
Counsel? Yes, Dave?
I'd like to move to enact draft ordinance number...
Wait. I'm sorry, but it does need to suspend Rule 26B. We, I'm sorry, we didn't put that in.
No, you did not. I move to suspend Rule...
Twenty-six.
Counsel Rule 26B to enact draft ordinance number 06-058 on first reading.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion on that? Seeing none in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Dave, please continue.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 06-058, providing for the submission to the qualified voters of the City of Des Moines at an election to be held on May 16th, 2006, a ballot proposition authorizing the city to increase its regular property tax levy to provide funds to restore police department staffing to previous year's levels, authorizing a maximum regular property tax levy rate for 2007 of $1.60 per $1,000 assessed value, authorizing annual increases in the levy amount by 4% for each of the five succeeding years, and increasing the levy each year thereafter as allowed by Chapter 84.55 RCW, directing the city clerk to certify a copy of this ordinance to the King County Records and Elections Division, and setting forth the ballot proposition.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll recognize, Carmen, I hear you. Okay. Motion been made, second discussion, Scott.
I have a few mechanics questions on the ordinance, and probably finances is the one. The 4% per year increase is on a presumption that the assessor is actually going to reassess and raise property values by something more than 4%.
Correct. My assumptions included a 5% increase in the assessed valuation.
What if that doesn't occur in a particular year? All of the sudden, we might bump into the $160 with only a 2% increase.
That's all they'll give us, then.
Okay. Then in the following year, is there a catch-up provision, or is it limited only 4% at that for the subsequent years?
You mean if they're, basically, because we couldn't use the full 4%?
Yeah, if one year we stopped at less than 4% because of the $1.60...
Could we bank it? I'd have to ask that question.
Yeah, because the wording of the proposition is pretty specific, only allowing a 4%, and it would, my impression would be it wouldn't be banked.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, that was the mechanics questions I had. In terms of the ordinance itself, I have a couple of thoughts I'd like to share. I'm going to support it regardless of what it ends up being, only because I think part of its cause for failure last time was a divided council and divided comments. I am worried, though, that this proposal won't pass, and my fear is that the six-year increase and commitment for the six years will turn most people off if they're willing to do the buck 60 to do the 4% for six years. And the buck 60 will go a long ways, you know, it will at least allow major restoration. The problem is, the cost of police services is escalating at a greater percentage rate than the 1% limit that's now in state law. So, no matter when, whether it was, you know, a one-time, or a three-year, or a six-year, whenever it ends, we all of a sudden start losing ground again. So, we don't have really in place a strategy for what happens then. We're also talking about economic development and, you know, the port buyout area may be our saving grace, and, you know, if it were to ramp up in four years, you know, I'm thinking that to ask for six years is too much, and that it won't pass because of that. My preference would be for a three-year limit, that gives us time to address other revenue I won't make a motion to that extent unless I hear that other people might be inclined to go that way. But I am fearful that it won't pass because of how much it's asking for and the duration for which it continues the increases.
Okay, I saw Susan first and Dan.
Well, Paul, just for the record, for the public to know, kind of, what would it, the cost be, you know, what would it cost a person? Like, a six-year over, you know, or on their tax...
What would be, oh, on a...
Just so people know, because they don't really even...
Well, we're at $1.16 right now, so it would be 44 cents per thousand of assessed valuation.
We're at $1.16 right now, but if I did the calculation correctly, you're assuming we're going to be at $1.12.
Right, assuming the 5% increase in the 80 cents.
Forty-eight cents per $1,000 of assessed value for a $200,000 house.
Well...
For, I mean, you can do the math, it is approximately 100...
43% increase over your current tax for the city only.
City only, correct.
A $350,000 home, that's about 400-something dollars, so the increase would be about $180, something like that, for a $350,000 house, about $180, possibly.
Thank you. Thank you. Per year?
Per year.
Yes, per year.
No, wait. Sorry. We're talking about a 4 tenths of a percent increase, right? You know, from 1.1 roughly to 1.5, oh, 1/2 percent of the 1.6. And if I multiply 0.5 to take a round number into 300,000, that's 150 bucks.
But what we do in the first year is we have a lift. We bring us up to $1.60.
From?
From, well, it'd be $1.12 if my estimates are correct. So, that is the biggest increase, is your lift.
Okay.
Then after that, it will start to go down again.
But my point is, I was using 4 tenths because it's a easy number to do in your head.
Mm-hmm.
You're going from 1.12 to 1.60, I'm sorry, so 0.5, round number, okay? That means on a $300,000 house, it's 150 dollars. And, you know, my...
Well, each year, it's going to go up. You're increasing your levy. We're allowed 1%, so we're increasing it another 3% to get us to the 4% thereafter, after the lift.
So, for a $300,000 home, it's an additional... So for a $300,000 home, it's an additional $150 per year for the first year. The next year, it's 300, it's 150 plus an additional 4%.
Right.
4% of 150.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So an additional $6.
No, it's 4% of the 300.
Yeah, it's on the whole AV.
Total, not 4% of the lift.
No, it's 4% of the lift. Let's clarify that question. The 4% increase is only for the additional amount that is allowed by the levy lid lift and not for the total $1.60.
It's on the total levy.
So it's, so the total levy goes up?
It's on the total levy, yes.
Mind if I say?
Trying to clarify things to the public and we're confusing them. Dan?
Yeah, thanks. I've just got a couple of thoughts. Yeah, Scott brings up surreal issue, and, you know, I don't know what the answer to that is, other than, you know, we've gone at the public before, asking for money for various things, and we never get it. I can remember, you know, and we've had this argument before, not argument, discussion before, and that is, do we ask for what we really think we need, or do we ask for less because we think the public might go for less and will accept half? We have chosen in the past to ask for what we really need. We did that, for example, with the ball fields, and that didn't go anywhere, I believe, and we wound up being able to put together part of it. We got part of it, but we certainly don't have the money to, you know, to do more. And I guess in doing part of it, we took away from other things we could have done, like police. So there are choices that we make, and, you know, I believe that the police, what the police department is asking for is what we really need, and that's what we should put to the public.
Thank you.
So I'm supporting that, because if we ask for half, it gets turned down anyway. We don't know why the people turn it down. Most people are going to either vote for it or against it. They're going to look at their property taxes and say, "Oh, my God, I'm paying so much in the property taxes," and they're not going to want to pay more. And that's possible. It doesn't matter how much more we ask. Others are going to be looking at the safety issues and the police and say, "Well, well, we really need to do this, and I guess if I have to pay some more, I'm going to." I mean, you know, again, the city portion, people should remember that the city portion of your King County property tax is only a small portion of that. It's about, what, 11%, something like that? It's only 11, and does that include the voted bonds as well, like for the police?
No, the voted bond is about 37 cents per thousand with AV.
All right, so maybe we're 13% total of your, of the total you pay on your house to King County on the little property tax statement that we all got recently, only about, you know, in the teens, low teens, comes to the city. Some of it you actually voted on, or voted, bonds voted on by the people. Just for a little perspective, if your entire property tax of $1.60, if it went to $1.60, and that entire property tax went to the police, it would only cover 2/3 of the current police budget. So if your entire property, I mean, if your property tax now, as it is now, went, that's covering maybe half the police budget. The city has to have taxes and fees elsewhere to pay, not only just, we're just talking about the police now, the city provides other services. We just heard people come in and talk to us about, "We want to streamline permitting, we want to make it easier." Well, you know, making permitting easier for the public is probably going to make it harder and more expensive for the city. It doesn't make it easier for the city to make it easier for the public. So, well, these are all at streets. We never have enough money for streets. We're supposed to be on a 20-year replacement cycle, and we're on, what, a 60-year replacement cycle?
10 years.
For streets. So now I'm saying, if your current total property tax was only used for police, it would only cover half the existing budget, which is inadequate as it is. That's just, I want you to get some perspective on what you're paying in taxes and what it costs to provide services. At the end of this, you know, the other option is if the public doesn't pass the property tax increase, you know, we're going to be, you know, Dave and Ed, and I certainly feel the same way, have committed to finding the money. Anyway, well, you don't find money from nowhere. It's obviously going to have to come from somewhere. And just looking at the increase that's being requested, at the end of, you know, it's the six years, it's going to be about $1.5 million, which I believe is the current total Parks and Recreation budget. So, which, of course, in six years or seven years, is going to be more than that. So I guess we could cut the entire Parks and Recreation budget and be able to provide you with the police services you want. You know, the city is just like your, like anyone else's budget. We have so much money, we have to decide where it's going to be best spent. And I know a lot of people come here and say, "Well, I have a budget, and I can't afford it anymore, so I can't give it to you." All right, if that's how you feel, okay, you're the one that's going to make these decisions. We're going to put it on the ballot. I know there's support to do that. It's up to the public to decide whether they want those increased services for safety and police, which I feel we do need. And if you don't want to give that to us, we are going to have to take something away. And we're not going to be happy about it, and I'm just using Parks and Rec as an example because that, just that, their budget just fits in very nicely. I'm not saying we're going to cut the entire Parks and Rec budget, but just so you get some perspective on what we're talking about in terms of money and value. Again, your current property tax only pays for half the police budget today. And if you paid the buck 60 per thousand on your property tax, if you voted for this, and all your property tax went to the police, it still wouldn't pay for the current budget, to pay for 2/3 current budget. Costs a lot of money to have protection and safety. And so I don't think we're asking for too much. I think, I'm glad the police came to us with a budget that if we had this, we'd be okay. I'd rather you do that than ask for too little and, you know, and then people pass it and say, "Hey, I thought this is what you needed." So, anyway, that's where I stand on this matter. Thank you.
Yes, Ed.
We've heard this evening from the Des Moines Leadership Summit, a bunch of ideas to enrich our community. Those ideas and their priorities indicated a cornerstone of making those wonderful things happen in the city is having a safe community. Safety is what our people want. We've heard from the police chief, and I've seen reports, because those have been available, on how crime in this community, this community, not King County, not Normandy Park here, is going up at a much faster rate than elsewhere around us because we're a patsy. They can come here and have a higher probability of getting away with it. I think it's about time that the citizens of this community step up to the task of giving us the funds to restore our police department. I move the question.
Okay. Well, the, an offer's been made to call the question. Is, I'm aware of that. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, and all those in favor, there is no more discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That does pass. So now we go to the vote that Mr. Kaplan, the motion Mr. Kaplan made. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Did I see any opposition?
I need to read the whole title.
Okay. There we go.
Your Honor?
Yes.
We do need to officially read the entire title.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Okay, thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Des Moines, Washington, providing for the submission to the qualified voters of the city of Des Moines and an election to be held on May 16, 2006, of a proposition authorizing the city to increase its regular property tax levy annually for six consecutive years above the limit established in RCW 84.55.010 in order to provide funds to restore police department staffing to previous year's levels, setting forth the ballot proposition, and directing the city clerk to certify a copy of this ordinance to the King County Records and Election Division. The proposition would approve a maximum regular property tax levy rate for 2007 of $1.60 per $1,000 assessed valuation, authorized annual increases in the levy amount by 4%, thereby setting a limit factor at 104% for each of the five succeeding years, and increase the levy each year thereafter as allowed by Chapter 84.55 RCW. That concludes that gen item. Thank you, counsel. The next item is interlocal agreement between the city of Des Moines for senior services for 2006. Counsel, normally, I would have put this on your agenda as a consent item. However, when I was reading through it, the interlocal agreement, there was a paragraph in there that caught my eye that more or less disturbed me, and I'll point that out to you at this time. It's paragraph eight, wherein by it says effective date and early termination. It states that this agreement shall take effect and be in full force as of January 1, 2006, which has already passed, and shall remain in force until December 31, 2006, provided, however, that either party may terminate this agreement at any time by written notice to the other party of such intent 90 days in advance of the intended termination date. This is much different than the city council has approved in the past, and that's why I'm offering it to you as a regular item for discussion, because I personally feel that we don't need to have this type of a clause in there, and if for some reason, let's say Normandy Park should opt out of this, I don't want our city to be put in a position where we're asking the residents of Normandy Park to be, go home, so to speak. So, let me start with Scott, and then we'll go to Ed.
Yeah, a couple of comments, couple of questions. This clause, is that the request of Normandy Park?
Yes, it is.
And if we weren't to sign any agreement with Normandy Park, would we ask those Normandy Park people to go home?
My understanding is that this was placed into effect by the city manager of Normandy Park, and Tony, maybe you can shed a little light in that particular part of the discussion they had.
I've spoken with the city manager of Normandy Park on several occasions about this. When we discovered that we needed to enter back into an interlocal agreement with the city of Normandy Park for senior services, we just sent over a copy of the last agreement we had signed and said, "We're ready to put this in front of our council." Normandy Park came back and said, "Great, however, for budgetary flexibility reasons, we need to have a cancellation clause in there." They had originally asked for 30 days. We negotiated it to 90. I spoke with the city manager this morning. She's telling me that the city council of Normandy Park did take a look at this agreement a few weeks ago. They liked the cancellation clause, according to Ms. Papke. And in addition to that, they would like to talk about having a three-year agreement, essentially as you see it here. My feeling was, I wasn't sure where the Des Moines council would want to go, particularly with this clause in there, but that I would bring her recommendations or her request and the Normandy Park council's request to you this evening.
Scott, you still have the floor, Scott.
Okay, continuing with that thought, then, I wouldn't be opposed to a three-year agreement, but, and I know it would seem as though if we were really charging the true cost of service, there'd be some escalation clause to the $10,000, as opposed to a fixed fee for the next three years, which is the same as it's been for the last X number of years. And I know Normandy Park has as many budget woes as we do, but for a longer-term agreement, we should really be talking about having that money increase as our cost for providing the service increase. If we have a termination clause, and I'm not opposed to the clause and the reasons for it, but the mechanics aren't worked out. If the compensation is quarterly payments, we need to make it clear that that quarterly payment is due January 1st, March, or April 1st, and it needs to be tied to the termination clause that, right now, the way the termination clause would read, would have to give money back because it would terminate the whole contract for the year. So it needs to be made clear in the termination clause that the termination doesn't affect the quarterly payments that have already been made under the terms of the agreement. So there's some mechanical issues in the agreement we probably need to address.
The effective language could easily be parroted through the effective date of termination.
Yeah, yeah. So, I wouldn't be opposed to a three-year deal, but the 10,000 ought to increase, and it should have been more anyway, and the termination clause needs to be fixed. And if we're going to have quarterly payments, we should probably talk about a due date.
All right, Ed, and then Dan.
I'm personally insulted by this contract. I was a resident of Normandy Park for 10 years before I moved into what became Des Moines, and I still have friends there. And the people I know there, and I don't know every one of them, but the people that I do know there are proud of having a responsible city that is willing to serve its citizens. The proposed contract asked the city of Des Moines to fund about 3/4 of the costs for serving Normandy Park residents. I had a session with Sue and got some data.
Is that Sue Patton I was?
Sue Patton, yes.
Thank you.
And got some data, and basically, the data supports the fact that what Normandy Park is proposing is to fund 2.5% of our costs. Yet, 10% of the attendance at our center comes from Normandy Park. 19% of the access riders come from Normandy Park. They also get meals on wheels, in above a 2.5%, a 2.5% rate. I mean, I think Normandy Park ought to be responsible to the citizens to step up to a fair share. The $10,000 by itself is, we're asking our citizens to fund Normandy Park citizens. So my view is, either we get them to step up to a fair share, and it may require, because of budget problems, that they do it in two years, you know, or three, a contract that says you pay, you know, twice the, $20,000 now, $30,000 then, and $40,000 or an appropriate amount. And if they don't want to do that, then we should allow Des Moines residents free access to our services, and Normandy Park residents, we should determine a fee per service. You want a meal on wheels? It'll cost so much. You want to attend a session there? It'll cost so much. And that way, we cover people from other cities who may stop by at our senior center. But if Normandy Park doesn't want to support the citizens, then let the citizens know that Normandy Park doesn't want to support them. I think accepting this would let them off the hook.
Tony, were they asking for a three-year contract that's fixed at the amount? Because that would explain why they might want a three-year contract.
And the city manager didn't give me a set amount, so I'm assuming, yes, they were expecting to pay no more than $10,000 a year.
Well, that would fix them for three years at that amount, and I can see why they'd want a three-year contract. Let me jump to Dan first, and then to Susan.
Well, I have to concur with Ed's comments. Here, it says the funds provided in 2005 were approximately 5% of the senior service annual budget. Maybe they paid us more in 2005 than they want to pay us this year. And then it points out that the residency benefit were approximately 10%, and I'm assuming that that means 10% of services.
And may I comment all these numbers and the like? Because, quite honestly, it all depends on what you count as part of the senior services budget and what you don't. If you take the entire budget for senior services that includes all of the programs that people pay, everyone, including Des Moines residents, pay a fee for, the trips that are taken, and a variety of other revenue-type generation activities that Sue does at the senior center, the budget is just a little short of $400,000. So using the equation that Councilmember Pina did, then yes, the revenue that they are offering is about 2.5% of our overall value of the senior services budget. But if you take out some of those fee-for-service things, you basically cut it in about half.
So it's about 5%.
So then you get the 5% that we-
So then you get the five percent that we mentioned in the.
Either way.
Either way, they're not paying.
They're not paying their fair share. It would cost them, because they're such a small, they're a much smaller city, obviously it would cost them a tremendous amount to have to have a program of their own in that city. It's still a savings for them to utilize our services, even if they were paying their fair share. So I have to agree with Ed on that, and I would like to see a fairer share arrangement, and that perhaps if the city of Normandy Park doesn't want to provide those services to their senior citizens, we could, out of compassion, make it available on a pay-as-you-go basis to individual senior citizens, but then charging them what is a fair amount for those services.
Tony, this is March, have they paid anything?
No, they have not.
Please keep that in mind. Yes, Susan.
Yes, well, thank you for, you know, taking the time and talking to Sue about this. But, well, it's true, I mean, obviously, you know, not really paying their fair share on this, in a way. And I guess I'd like to just ask Sue what she thinks as far as, you know, if they're not willing to negotiate this, then implementing, you know, a fee, a little higher fee, then with that, how do you feel about that? I'd like to hear your feelings on this, Sue.
I spoke with the city of Renton, who has a resident, non-resident fee for their senior center, and there are definitely, it's more the administrative time of doing that, a lot of complaints.
A lot of complaints.
Well, from the people who don't understand, you know, well, I'm paying for the school taxes, what do you mean, I have to pay more to participate in these programs. It has leveled out, from what he said, but there is administrative time involved. They didn't really see a big decrease in numbers, but then they didn't see a lot of additional revenue either, it was pretty flat across the line. My gut is, they'll go to Burien, you know, they'll say, okay. My personal feeling is that it's money that does support us, it doesn't adequately support us based on the services we provide, but looking at my budget, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Right.
I've been with the city eleven years, and it was five thousand, about five thousand when I started, the highest it's ever been was twelve, and ten. Our participation numbers have been anywhere between seven and thirteen percent over those eleven years. It does make them, with our, some of our services, we would not be allowed to charge an additional fee because they're not our, the nutrition program isn't a city program, Meals on Wheels is not a city program, and those are donations, and we would not be able to do that, I don't think, with our agreement with those, with Senior Services Agency. So those are some of my thoughts.
Well, so what would, if they entered into this interlocal agreement with Burien, then what would, I mean, they.
They're not giving any money to the city of Burien. Burien doesn't ask them for it.
Well, maybe it's a good idea, like you mentioned, Ed, is to, you know, take it back and just say, look, you know, maybe do this in an incremental way, but ask for a little more money that would.
I would suggest that we certainly could add language in here that would say something along the lines of, the amount that would be paid would be increased from year two to year three, so that by the, by the time we hit year three, they're paying a pro-rata share of the amount of services that are being provided to their citizens, and we can use the previous year's survey information that Sue does at the senior center, so we can establish what that percentage is.
Does that sound?
And they are a two-year budget cycle, too, so we.
I think that's a good solution. Yes.
The city of Des Moines is not obligated to accept a change in a contract that it doesn't agree to, you can strike language that you find objectionable.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Carmen, and then Ed again.
Is it fairly stable at the number, four hundred and sixty-three people that come repeated times during the year?
Well, as I said, our percentage is pretty close, right between eight and ten percent for us, participating, and that's based on, you know, we probably miss, that's off those participation cards that we ask everyone to fill out, we enter that information in our database. We don't catch every person that comes into the building to use our programs and services, but we sure try. So again, it's approximate an estimate as we can do. Yes, Scott.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
Hey.
I don't get up here very often, well, my. My thought was.
She still has the floor.
My thought was, should it be, if we could track how many people were using it, based on so many dollars per usage, and if the usage went up, they would be obligated to pay more, and if it went down, they wouldn't. But I don't, that's why I was trying to get a sense of how well they're tracked.
Mm-hmm.
But it seems like they're not paying their fair share for the services that they get, and I would wonder if their people realize that, that the city is not paying its fair share for what they are getting from us.
I'm sure the average person down there doesn't have a clue about that, and that's one of the things that concerns me, too, Carmen, is I don't want to use these senior citizens as a ping-pong ball between the two cities, which is, upsets me why the city manager did this. Okay, Ed, you were next.
Well, you know, I can see why the city council there might like a deal like this, because it's free in Burien. If Burien wants to subsidize Normandy Park residents, I don't have a problem with that, as for their city council, I'll deal with their citizens. As someone who's fighting, as we all are, to try and get our budget back in line, to try and put our money where the needs are, I don't think subsidizing Normandy Park citizens is our responsibility at all.
Scott.
Within the senior centers in the community, we have one, Burien has one, C-Tech has one.
Taquilla.
Taquilla has a nice one.
My impression is that there's a certain amount of mobility amongst the centers for different programs.
That's correct.
You know, so, some of our people go to C-Tech, some of the C-Tech people come here, you may go to a different place a different day of the week, depends where the bridge game is, I suppose. So, other cities probably have other participation rates, probably not as high as Normandy Park, and clearly, I would guess that because of the way Normandy Park is situated, long and narrow, that the north half of Normandy Park really goes to the Burien one already, and, you know, we're predominantly serving the south half. So, I don't know that just looking at the participation rates and saying that you have to pay that much share is a totally mathematical way of getting there, without saying, okay, Kent, you need to pay us so much, and Taquilla, you need to pay us so much, and oh, by the way, then I guess we owe a share of each one of those as well. So, I struggle with that notion a little bit. And the other issue is, if we threw the Normandy Park residents out, it wouldn't save us a lot of money. So, in a sense, Normandy Park has been riding on the incremental cost approach instead of the fair share cost approach.
Yes, I think that's fair to say.
As we say, ten thousand is an extra amount of budget, and I don't know that we'd bar the door to those people and deny them services, especially many of the services they're entitled to through other programs. So it's kind of been a dilemma over the history of this thing, that Normandy Park has kind of budgeted what they can afford, and we graciously accepted it. So that's kind of, now, you know, the implication is this Normandy Park city manager is trying to pull one over on us, and I don't think that's the case. So, I would hope that in whatever conversations we have, we can keep things amicable and build relationships, because certainly over the years, Normandy Parks has been one of our best allies as we've dealt with regional issues. So whether, you know, we say, our mayor should talk to their mayor, the city managers get together, or whatever, I would like to keep this cordial, I do think we should work towards increasing their participation.
May I suggest something? Obviously, city managers have discussed it, and it is now before the Des Moines City Council for action. What I can do is get a correspondence going to their mayor from me, directed by you people, informing them of what this council's concerns are. In addition to that, we are now into the first quarter of the year, I think it should be fair of us to say, all right, by the way, while this has been bantering back and forth, you are, oh, it's the first quarter. I don't want this going on and on and on and on.
Yeah.
Yes.
When you're finished.
And then it just drags on and on and on, and finally, they just say, heck with you, we've already provided them what a half a year's service. I don't think that's right, either. So, yes, Dave, I'll give you a second. So those are the two suggestions I would make, I will take, I will do whichever the council directs me to. So, Ed?
Well, I, I hear the comments that Scott has made and some of you have made. If Normandy Park is unwilling to enter into an agreement that we're, that is mutually agreeable with us, and I see nothing wrong with determining a fee, and the fee can include an administrative cost for handling them, for the services that we can charge for. And I think the, and I think Scott's right, those that live in the south end of the city will tend to come here, those that are in northern, will tend to go to Burien, but they already do that now. I do not think it is fair to our citizens to continue a process where we are essentially subsidizing them. If they're, I mean, I can see a plan where they step up to their fair share, I can see a plan where they, we have no contract, and we establish a fee for non-residents. We're not a charitable organization for non-Demoines residents.
Okay, I feel that I'm getting a pretty good read on the council, and I'm sure I can communicate that, but, Dave, I think I saw you first, and Carmen.
Yeah, in following up on the discussion on the termination clause, that's totally unacceptable to me. I think it's absolutely atrocious, I mean, I can understand the reason for it from a budgetary standpoint, but you know what, we count on this ten thousand, we budget for this ten thousand dollars in revenue, the residents of our city depend upon us to pass a budget, and in theory is balanced, and, you know, at the end of the year, and is predicated on them making their payments. Technically, you know, their payments due, you know, March thirty-first, you know, so, at the latest, so we'll see if they make payment or not. In terms of the termination clause, I would ask that it put a period after December thirty-one, two thousand and six, and strike the rest of it, and.
Well, that's what I would like to see.
And in terms of the, I like Scott's idea about adding the specific dates in which the payments are due, and I would not be in favor of an additional agreement, in fact, I think what we need to do is send a letter along with the revised draft back to them indicating that we're not interested in a multi-year agreement at this point in time until the issue of appropriate share of expenses can be discussed with Normandy Park, and if not made to our satisfaction, then alternatives, alternative providers will have to be sought for by the city of Normandy Park if they want to do that for the residents, because we'll have to make appropriate adjustments. That at least allows us to be able to make an adjustment in the budget for this next year in terms of the ten thousand dollars rather than having to incur it now. I mean, they could conceivably, because we don't have the agreement signed, they could conceivably terminate it before then anyways, terminate services before then, but I don't think they're going to do that to their residents.
I don't think so.
So, that would be my recommendation, but I want to make it clear that under no circumstance should they be allowed to terminate. I think they're in the same boat we are from a budgetary standpoint, we all have deadlines we have to meet in terms of passing a budget, we place a reliance upon that revenue being there, and because this is a discretionary revenue source, rather than something that we can't plan on in terms of sales tax revenues or some other thing, that we should be able to hold them accountable for it, and the only way to do that is to strike that portion of the termination clause, you know.
Thank you, Dave. All right, Carmen, then Dan, then Scott.
I wanted to ask Sue a little bit about the makeup of the ones who come from Normandy Park. I think of that area as, on average, having a higher income than some of the poorer areas within our city. Would there be any value to us that they might participate more in activities where they contribute to fundraisers? Is it a poor group, is it an average group, is it one that helps us in other ways?
It's, I think it's just like, it's all levels. We have the people along First Avenue, in the apartments, that, you know, we deliver a lot of meals, we provide those services there, but also, you make a good point, Carmen, that the higher income of Normandy Park, a lot of our bigger trips, those are revenue for us also, to provide our programs and services, and we see a lot of those people for our bigger, the trips are a big fundraiser for us.
Quick question.
No, no, no. There's people ahead of you.
Clarification of a point you just made.
Yeah, but please.
Well, I just make it short. When you.
Ed, Ed, all right, I'm going to be flexible this time, but I think we need to talk about this.
Okay, well, but my.
Go ahead.
She made a comment that there's a fee for trips, those trips would still be available, I mean, and for a fee, because we do that now. Okay?
Okay. Carmen, you still have the floor.
Well, my only concern is that if someone shows up at the door and is told that, I'm sorry, you're going to have to pay to come in this time because your city's no longer supporting, I think it's going to create embarrassment, it's going to create an awkward situation. We might be making a bigger issue out of this than it's worth making.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and as I was alluding to earlier, I don't want this council to be the one responsible necessarily for putting Normandy Park seniors out of the senior center, and this is one of the things I think I resent the city manager for bringing this whole thing up to begin with, but I'm getting a good read on where you're headed with this, so, Dan, and then Scott.
Yeah, we're not the aggressors, it's Normandy Park who's inconsiderate of their own citizens by not covering proper costs. I'm certainly in support of modifying the, you know, termination clauses, has been discussed by you, Mr. Mayor, and others, and asking for a higher amount, I would ask our senior services director, Sue Patton, to work up some figures that might be able to apply, including administrative costs that we would charge on an individual basis. Nothing is going to be done without forewarning. I think that we should inform Normandy Park that we're certainly considering, that the council is considering a per-senior charge. If the city of Normandy Park is not able to meet their responsibility to their citizens, we give adequate notice to the seniors. We, before we talk to the seniors, we exhaust our, you know, legislative, administrative avenues, but perhaps Sue could work up some figures that, or you could certainly say that we're working those figures up, and we're ready to do that if we have to. So I certainly don't think we should be subsidizing Normandy Park when we're asking our own citizens to increase their property taxes for, to pay for police services, I mean, come on, this is, it's ridiculous. And, you know, you can, you know, you talk about incremental costs, additional costs that are just incremental, but I remember a hospital that I had. that are just incremental, but I remember a hospital that I had privileges at in Seattle, which no longer owns the hospital. And I remember when they were talking about this wonderful contract, I mean, it's a lot of changes have gone on in healthcare over the last 20 or 30 years. And I remember how they were talking about, oh, we've got this great contract with the Department of Social Health Services for Medicaid patients. We're not going to get paid as much, you know, per patient, but we're going to have a lot of patients. And I thought to myself, wait a minute, if you lose money on every patient, you're not going to survive.
You make it up in volume, Dan.
That's what they're telling me, you'll make it up in volume. And you know what? They went bankrupt. And therefore, they were not able to fulfill their mission, which was to serve the ill. They can no longer do it. They went bankrupt, and they weren't able to provide those services anymore. Now another, another organization owns the hospital facility, which I have privileges. So we ought to consider that. If seniors stop going to, if seniors in Normandy Park stop going to the Des Moines Senior Center and all go to Burian where they're not paying anything, believe me, Burian's going to notice they have a new influx of customers, and they're not going to be able to continue to provide the services for free. So I would concur with what other people have said and ask you, Mr. Mayor, to proceed as we've discussed.
Thank you. Scott, and then I'm going to wrap up the discussion.
I really think that senior center staff really ought to whip up those Normandy Park people so they go complain to their city council, so the city council is more than ready to
I agree.
I've seen our senior centers, well, our whole Parks Department staff get people behind things in the past.
Is that a motion also?
That'll be at the council appreciation luncheon also.
So there's tacit, okay, but anyway. If we ended up getting to a fee for service, we need to structure it so that there's reciprocity with those cities that provide service and don't charge, so that our citizens can go to the Burian one, and the Burian citizens can come to ours and that. And, you know, we're just holding Normandy Park out as the group that would have to pay because they have no program of their own, you know? So let's not make it harder than, I know, I know, but he says, don't make me. But anyway, so, you know, the fee for service would only be with the city that doesn't have their own program that's using ours.
Tony, I believe you wanted to get a word in?
Yeah.
But don't say anything that's going to whip up the council again.
Unfortunately, Your Honor, unfortunately, it might, but I think you need to know this information. The city of Normandy Park was the one who discovered we didn't have an agreement because the auditor caught them paying us without a written agreement. The city manager has informed me they will not pay us anything until we have a written agreement in front of us that everyone can sign off on.
You got them whipped up.
So here's what I am going to suggest we go back to Normandy Park with. We tell them that we would like to have the exact agreement we've agreed to for years, no termination clause, $10,000. We can add in some due dates for payments, I think that's appropriate, for the rest of this year. Let's get it done so we can get them paying us. At the same time, with all the comments that I've been hearing from council, many of which I agree with, I think myself, along with the mayor, should go and meet with the Normandy Park mayor and the Normandy Park city manager to say, we want to have another agreement for 2007, but here are the terms that need to be in it. We do need to get something done for 2006.
We will do that, and we will report back to the council. And I think I got a very clear read on where this council's coming from. Thank you. So we don't need to take any action on this one tonight.
I would recommend not.
All right. If there's a council member that would like to make a motion to adjourn wow, don't everybody speak A motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor, please raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Next meeting will be a regular meeting on March 23rd. Thank you, council.